Good evening, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Montclair Township Board of Adjustment. Notice of this meeting has been published in the Montclair Times and posted on the bulletin board in the hall outside. Do I want me to -- okay. The first item on our agenda is the roll call.
And then after that, I'll go from there.
Okay, good. I'm out of practice with this board. Chairman Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Fleischer is excused. Mr. Church.
Here.
Mr. McCullough is absent. Mr. Moore is excused. Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
And Mr. Caulfield.
Here.
Okay.
We have the minutes of the June 19 meeting. I have a few corrections on page five. On line six, just so my remarks are semi-coherent, well, first line four, the "yes" should be struck out, and then on line six, strike out, "There is a public good to the historic potential," and also noted that, so it just reads, "He noted that the building is new construction."
Okay.
And then at the beginning of condition two, put "Subject to the review of the board's attorney."
Okay.
And I thought I had a correction on page six, but I'm not finding it. Page eight, condition one, after crosseesement, put "Subject to the approval of the board's attorney" on line 17. And page 10, line four, "Mr. Simon" should be capitalized.
Okay.
Anyone else, any changes to those minutes?
Okay.
Someone want to move approval?
Move to accept the minutes as corrected.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? We have the resolution for the Chandra property on Valley Road. I don't have any changes to the resolution. Anyone else with any changes? Someone want to move approval of the resolution?
Move to accept the resolution?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? Resolution for 133 Forest Street, on page two, condition two, again, put in "Subject to review of the board's attorney" at the beginning of the condition. Any other changes to that resolution? Someone want to move the resolution?
I'll move the resolution.
Who is that, was it Mr. Simon?
Church.
Church, okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any extensions? We have the resolution for the Gookdogan application on Mission Street. I don't have any changes to that resolution. Anyone else with any changes to that resolution? Someone want to move the resolution?
I'll move the resolution.
Who is that, was it Mr. Simon?
Is there a second?
Church.
Church, okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any extensions? We have the resolution for the Gookdogan application on Mission Street. I don't have any changes to that resolution. Anyone else with any changes to that resolution? Someone want to move the resolution?
Move to approve the resolution on 27 Mission Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? And then on the 26th, Lexington Avenue property, again, change to the first condition, so after crosseesement, put "Subject to the approval of the board's attorney." Any other changes to that resolution? Someone want to move the resolution?
I'll move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? Want to announce the postponement while we're on the odd chance somebody?
We need still to get given this one?
Yeah, we have one more resolution.
Two more.
Two more?
Two more.
Ninety-seven Essex and Four Waterbury.
Yeah.
No, I did, we did Four Waterbury.
We still have ninety-seven Essex.
Right. Okay. Ninety-seven Essex Avenue. I don't have any changes to the resolution. Any other changes to the resolution? Someone want to move the resolution?
Move to accept the resolution. Ninety-seven Essex.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I believe we didn't do it. The Waterbury Road, I don't have any changes to the resolution. Anyone else with any changes? If someone want to move the resolution?
Move to approve, Four Waterbury Road. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need to announce the withdrawal of the Mountain Avenue resolution?
Yes.
So, the application for 10 Mountain Avenue, which commenced the hearing a couple meetings ago, has been withdrawn, so there will be no further action on the application because there is no application. The first application on the agenda is Chris and Krikome Craig for property at 195 Christopher Street. This is an application for a variance to construct a front porch addition to an existing dwelling. Property is the R11 Family Zone District. The property is designated on the township tax maps, this lot 33 and block 4,513. A variance is requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45B1 to permit a minimum front yard setback for interior lots of less than the required average front yard setback for the four nearest principal structures. Are taxes paid and is the notice in order?
The notice is appropriate and the taxes have been paid.
And, okay, and just so the record's clear, Mr. McCullough has arrived.
I want you to have a seat. Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board? State your name and address, please.
Christopher Craig, 195 Christopher Street.
You want to tell the board what you're proposing to do?
Hi, as stated, my name is Christopher Craig. I live at 195 Christopher Street in Montclair. The plan is to basically build a front covered porch, which -- hello, okay. So, I meet the 45-foot front yard setback, but I do not meet the more restrictive setback where I need to have a front porch to the average of two homes to my left and two homes to my right. The addresses that are, the two homes that are to the north of me, 197 and 199 Christopher Street, they don't really have a front porch. Front porches are pretty common on Christopher Street. So, because they just have vestibule, their setback is a little further back, but the houses to the south of our house, 187 and 191 Christopher Street, they have a porch that is consistent with our, with the setback, with the porch that I'm proposing right now.
Questions, members of the board?
Just, is the vestibule, the overhang that you have there?
Yes.
Can you just tell me, like, is that going to be a solid piece of, is there a door there? Is it, just tell me about, about that area. Are you building out onto that, into the porch?
Well, currently, we have our second floor master bathroom, so if you look at number six and number seven listed on there, that is the second level master bathroom, which my wife and I, all Pinocchio's knows. The porch is basically proposed to not go beyond that existing overhang. So, we will basically be in line with that overhang, and that overhang will match, the overhang of the proposed roof-covered porch will match the overhang of that area. So, we're just trying to finish up the, sort of, the last phase of construction on this house, which purchased, oh, 2013 and 2014, I don't remember. So, we've done a lot of work with, on the, on the house, and this is sort of the last, last aspect of the construction over here, of this house.
Is that going to be enclosed?
The porch? No, it's going to be an open porch.
The, below where the bathroom is, is that going to be open? It looks like that's conclosed on the drawings.
That'll be open.
That's open, okay.
Correct. That is the existing front door that you see in elevation number eight.
Yes.
Which is depicted, if you look at number six. So, there is a little bit of a bump out there.
Okay.
Which is part of the existing.
Yes, okay. Thank you, sir.
Other questions?
So, will the proposed porch extend beyond the current Pinocchio's nose or the existing setback?
No. The, the front overhang of the second level will be the extent of the roof. So, the fascia will match and the gutters will match, and all be in line. I'm not going, there was no proposal for it to go any further.
And did you add on that appendage where your master bathroom is?
No.
That was there?
Yes.
Other questions, members of the board?
I'm trying to understand the survey you submitted and a couple of questions because that, that's, in terms of the, what's showing is the existing footprint of the house, that's showing the covered porch is coming out beyond that, and that's not what your testimony is indicating.
Are you looking at number nine?
Yes.
No, nine is, is showing, the overhang is the, actually, the dash line that, that you see there, which is, well, which one I call Pinocchio's nose, but it will not extend beyond that.
And then?
The average setbacks, and if you look at item number 14, is the exercise that I did to measure from the existing curve to the foremost front of each home. And that's where the average is, where they came from. I didn't have the other, I don't, I do not have access to the, to my neighbor's actual survey, so I just basically did setbacks from the curves, and then I did the, the average from there. And that's what I came up with.
So, so when your survey is showing fif, various?
Fifty-two.
Two, fifty-three feet back to the house, that's because?
That's right.
That's measuring from the property line, and your measurements are from the, from the curb line?
Correct.
Okay. And, okay, so, that explains that. And then, the second floor that protrudes, I mean, both the pictures and your drawings show a fairly substantial roof overhang. When you're saying you're going only as far out as, you're talking about the actual building part, not the roof overhang. Is that correct?
Pass the question again. So, my roof, or the porch, would go from the main body of the second floor house and extend to the same overhang. So, the extension, or whatever you want to call it, Pinocchio's nose, I believe it's thirty, I think it's 24 or 30 inches, I don't remember, that will be the extent, that that roof extends beyond that portion.
But the actual wall of the porch is going to line up with the wall of the nose that sticks out, is that correct? Or is it going to line up?
There's not going to be a wall there, no, there's just the, the roof or the porch is going to be supported by columns.
Right. And where are the columns going to be located?
The columns are in line with the overhang. So, right now, I have existing columns that support?
The overhang.
The overhang.
And the columns for the porch are going to line up with that?
Will be in line with that, that's correct.
And so, and the roof is going to stick out two feet, give or take, beyond that?
That is correct.
Any other questions from members of the board?
Well, so, the 5204 feet that's shown on the survey, is that the measurement from the overhang, the edge of the overhang to the property line, or?
That is correct. That's the way that my surveyor did, I guess. Because that's where the line of the front of the porch columns would be. So, just to keep it consistent, I assume to do it that way.
Other questions from members of the board?
Are there any members of the audience who have questions, testimony, anything to say about the application? Yes.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board? State your name and address, please.
John Ryan, it's 189 Highland Avenue, Montclair. I'm here as a representative of the HPC. And we looked at this application in our last meeting, and we don't have any problems with, we had a very hard time reading these plans in terms of details, materials, certain things didn't seem to go together. So, what we're asking in, in our request is that you come back to us and read through those details in the process of the future. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Craig, did you review the memo from the Historic Preservation Commission?
That is correct.
And you're willing to comply with its recommendations?
That is correct.
Any other members of the audience with any comments, questions, anything you want to say about the application? Okay. Mr. Craig, is there anything further you want to say before we discuss and vote on the application?
Uh, no.
Okay. We'll start discussion, Mr. Caulfield.
I'm in favor of this application. I definitely think something is missing in the front, especially with the overhang of the bathroom. The porch aspect might be able to, you know, help the front out on this building. Obviously, I wasn't there when it was, you know, it looks like there's been work done on the house, et cetera, that you've been doing to see what it once looked like, but I'm in favor of this application.
Ms. Harris.
I'm in favor of the application. It's not making the existing condition worse, so.
Mr. Simon.
I'm in favor.
Mr. Church.
I'm in favor.
Mr. McCullough.
I'm in favor.
Mr. Allen.
I'm in favor.
I'm also in favor of the application. I think this is going to be an improvement to how the house looks, because it looks kind of interesting now, will be my nice word to describe it. I think with the porch going across the front, it'll be much more attractive. I don't think it will result in a substantial detriment to the public good or substantially impair the intended purpose of the zone plan. It'll be just extending as far as the existing overhang does. We should approve it with the conditions recommended by the Historic Preservation Commission. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll move the approval. Screen sight change.
Is there a second?
Second.
And that's with the conditions of this?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the continuation of the public hearing, the application by Paul M. Rotundo for property at 83 Park Street. Mr. Tremblek, are you ready to proceed?
Alan Tremblek appearing on behalf of the applicant, Paul Rotundo. This is a continuation of the hearing that we commenced at the last meeting on June 19. The application involves a proposed addition to the mixed-use building owned by Dr. Paul Rotundo located at 83 Park Street at the corner of Park and Walnut. Just a quick resuscitation of the relief we're seeking on the application. We need site plan approval and several variances. We need a D variance for the height of the proposed addition.
What's meaning you're talking about?
The height we're proposing matches the height of the existing building. However, it exceeds the maximum permitted height of 35 feet by more than 10 percent, and therefore, the statute requires a D variance for the, for the proposed height. We have, need a side yard variance for what is essentially an existing condition on the northerly side, but it's obviously going to be exacerbated by the additional building to be constructed on that northerly side of the, of the property. And we need several parking variances, including a parking, parking deficiency variances, variance, because we're proposing, initially, we're proposing 15 spaces. We've agreed to eliminate the space closest to Walnut Street, so therefore, we're proposing 14 spaces, whereas 18 spaces are required. Couple of other, other variances that will be discussed by our professional planner, and we need two design waivers for trash enclosure, for not providing a trash enclosure, and also for a parking area setback variance, which is almost redundant, not a variance, a waiver, which is similar to the variance that we're seeking. As you, the board will recall, the last meeting presented testimony from Dr. Rotundo, as well as testimony from the project architect, Mike Siewby. When we concluded, Mr. Siewby had essentially completed his testimony, and there was a bit of discussion regarding the report provided by the Historic Preservation Commission, which contained a total of 15 comments or recommendations. We've gone back and reviewed that report since the last meeting, and I can represent to the board that my client will agree to comply with eight of the 15 requirements, and specifically, paragraphs three, five, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 15 in the HPC report dated March 28, 2019. What I'd like to do tonight is I'd like to recall Mr. Siewby for some very brief testimony, supplementing his prior testimony in discussing the seven recommendations of the HPC report that we're unable or unwilling to comply with. And following that testimony, I have our professional planner, William Stimmel, to testify with regard to the planning testimony, and also to provide some brief testimony regarding three engineering issues, and putting on his hat as a professional engineer as well. So, I'd like to recall Mike Siewby.
Mr. Tremblek, will either you or Mr. Siewby go through the lines you're going to comply with, just like a quick?
Oh, I'll, I'll slow down.
Just, I, I think what you indicated, Mr. Tremblek, is that you're going to comply with comments three, five, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 15. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, Mr. Tremblek, let me ask Ms. Harris, you were not here at the June 19 meeting, correct? And did you get an opportunity to listen to the tape?
Yes, I watched the video.
Okay, so, we'll get you the signed certification, so you'll be eligible to vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Siewby, you're still under oath.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, Mr. Siewby, if you could just review the comments in the HPC report that we're not able to comply with, and just provide some comment and testimony and discussion regarding those items.
Sure. So, the first, first item is number four, and just to read it, there are too many, from the HPC, there are too many elements on the Park Street elevation which impact the overall scale of the house in a negative manner. Our response is, the number of elements we have included in the design is the amount required to fulfill the design objectives for the project. And really, for this reason alone, we would like to keep the composition as drawn.
And what are the design objectives that you're trying to achieve?
So, there are a number, on the interior, there are a number of operatories on the first floor for the dental practice, new operatories. We have a number of windows in there. We feel that natural, abundance of natural light views, the exterior is beneficial for the dental practice. Upstairs on the second floor is a residential master suite. Likewise, a number of windows in the master suite is beneficial for habitation. So, predominantly, the number of elements includes a large number of windows. The windows have shutters as well, and that's to really go along with the existing windows and shutters on the existing building.
Okay. You've sort of skipped over the first comment in the HPC report, which states that the new addition relates too closely to the existing and is therefore not compatible with the Secretary of the Interior standards.
Right.
Can you address that comment?
Yes, I mean, we're aware that in many cases, you don't necessarily comply with the standards. Predominantly, our addition looks a lot like the existing building. This really is mainly due to our interest in what we want the addition to look like. So, in a full response to number one, it's?
Well, to the Secretary of Interior Standards, are they applicable to this building, which is not designated as an historic property under the Montclair zoning ordinance?
My understanding would be, since it's not in a historic district, then as it is today, the standards would not apply.
Okay. What about the second comment about a roof plan?
So, the roof plan seems to be supplementary information on, on top of the views of the exterior, in addition to the aerial photos that were included in Graham Peddow's write-up memorandum. So, we feel that a roof plan would not really add any additional information, so we would, we would like to not provide that.
And just to, you mentioned Mr. Peddow's report dated May 29, 2019.
That's right.
And just showing you the top photo on page five, is that depict, is that an aerial photo of the existing building?
That is.
Which shows the roof as it presently exists?
It is, and the existing roof of the garage where our addition will be placed.
Okay. Next item would be number six.
Right. Actually, I could back up to five. This was one that we will comply with. I just want to point out that the dormer, it's a small dormer on Park Street elevation between the two main roofs. We are willing to consider removing that as one of the elements, to reduce the number of, of elements perceived by the HPC. So, we're willing, we're willing to look at that one. In terms of number six, the applicant should be encouraged to remove vinyl siding from the existing house. Our response is, removing the existing siding is beyond the work area, sorry, that is beyond the work areas, not within our construction budget. For this reason alone, we would like to keep the existing siding on the existing building.
Okay. And I know you discussed this at the last meeting, but what is the exterior, the exterior materials for the proposed addition?
So, we have, depending on budget, once we get pricing through design development, we're looking at either painted wood clavard or a fiber cement clavard.
The next comment would be comment number 12 regarding the accessible entrance.
Right. Number 12, so, the door at the accessible entrance should be a single-leaf door. Our response, providing only a single-leaf door would lessen the objective functionality of the addition. The needed layout of the exam rooms in the addition yields an interior hallway that is off-center in relation to the exterior west facade. In the interest of centering, of centering the barrier-free exterior door on the facade, we need to introduce a double-leaf door so that the active leaf of the double door is positioned within the interior hallway. Otherwise, clear space to open a single-leaf door from the interior would be obstructed by a cabinet that's placed in operatory one. For these reasons, we like to maintain a double-leaf door.
Okay. Next comment would be number 13.
Right. The canopy roof over the new accessible entrance is redundant. Only one entry should be Only one entry should be emphasized. If the applicant continues to desire protection for, for the opening, the roof configuration should be simplified. Uh, in my opinion, the size of the roof is minimally appropriate to a double-leaf door. It covers the width of the door and it projects 36 inches off of the facade. As for simplifying the composition of the roof, in comparison, a quantity of building materials that emphasizes the existing single-leaf entrance into the reception room is far more than the proposed roof over the new double door. The shed roof over the reception room works with the existing portico roof to emphasize the perception that the existing entry is the predominant one. Also, the existing portico has a column, has column supports. The proposed roof will not have column supports. For these reasons, we'd like to maintain the composition of the proposed canopy roof.
And finally, uh, comment number 14.
Right. Comment is, the applicant proposes two public entrances on Park Street. The applicant should consider one door and perhaps incorporate a lift for accessibility at the existing door. Our response is, for adequate emergency egress from the operatories in the addition, a second exit door improves the safety of first-floor occupants. The existing entry door is not handicapped. By design, since we need a second exit for emergency egress, designing the new entry as a barrier-free door achieves two objectives at a single point. For the, these reasons, we'd like to maintain two entries facing Park Street.
All right. Is there any further comments you'd like to make with respect to the HPC report? Does that cover everything?
About pretty much.
Okay. All right, nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Um, I forget which number it is, but, um, I'm just trying to understand your objection, your objection to, um, providing a roof plan. I would imagine you would need one for your construction documents, anyway, for the addition.
Um, actually, I don't really do roof plans all the time. It's really roof framing plans, so it's more skeletal, um, drawing. But roof, roof pitches are, I show on elevations.
Okay.
Vents, elevations.
And then, just one other question. Um, with the double-leaf door at the accessible entrance, on your plan, um, it looks like a single-leaf door. Um, what's that, is that second light meant to remain fixed?
What I'm showing is the active, the main, the active leaf. The other leaf does operate, is operable, but I'm showing it in the closed position.
Okay, but the, so this, the operable leaf or the active leaf, that, I mean, that's compliant with, you know, ADA requirements or...
Yes.
So, you don't really need a double-leaf door for this entrance? It's, it's, is it more aesthetic than, than functional?
It's more aesthetic. If we had a single-leaf door, it would be on the center of the facade and then it would, you wouldn't be able to operate it from the interior if it were.
You wouldn't be able to operate it on the interior because?
Because of a cabinet in operatory one, you'd be obstructing it.
But you couldn't have a single-leaf door in that same location?
You could. Our desire is to not have it off-center on the exterior.
Could you do a side light?
Yeah, it would probably be as big as the door, though.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from members of the board? Um... The, what is the reason for deviating from the maximum permitted height? And I guess, uh, by exceeding it by more than 10 percent, I mean, other than you'd like coming before this board or?
It has to do with being able to inhabit the attic. As it's drawn, in the attic, we have habitable space that's 215 square feet. If it were lower to 38.5 feet, which is 10 percent over, we'd only have 75 square feet of habitable space. If it complied to the max height of 35 feet, we'd have no habitable space. So, it's, it's really an opportunity to give the family living in the house...
Okay, could you give the difference between the habitable space with a, the 38.5, let, you know, 10 percent versus what you're proposing?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
You, you had done, and my writing speed tonight is clearly very slow, it, that you, the habitable space as proposed in the habitable space, if you did it with the, just the 10 percent exceeds.
Right. So, as drawn, there's 215 square feet. At, lowered to 38.5 feet, there's 75 square feet.
So, you're basically almost tripling these habitable square space by doing that.
Right.
Other questions from members of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Are there any members of the audience who have questions for this witness?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Um, I know we talked about this at a previous meeting, uh, but the, you're requesting a variance to have another parking space in the front yard?
On Walnut Street?
On Walnut Street.
We're omitting that one.
We agreed to, uh, eliminate that at the last meeting.
Okay. And my other question is, and you probably addressed it's at the last meeting, was the basement, you said the basement, you agreed to no longer have the dental use in the basement.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions for this witness from members of the public? Do I take it that means the HPC is in agreement with what he said? Okay. Oh, okay. You want to call your next witness? Yes, William Stimmel.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in a matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address.
William Stimmel, S.T.I.M.N.E.L. My professional address is P.O. Box 280, Rutherford, New Jersey.
All right. Mr. Stimmel has previously testified before this board on, I think, at least two recent occasions as a planner, and I would ask the board to stipulate his qualifications as a planner, but I do intend to elicit some professional engineering testimony and I don't think he's been qualified before as an engineer, so I'd like to do that now. Um, Mr. Stimmel, you're a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And when were you licensed?
2004.
All right. Can you give a little background regarding your other qualifications and experience as a, a professional engineer?
Certainly. I'm a graduate of NJIT with a degree in civil engineering. I've been employed for the past, uh, 20 years as an engineer and planner, a licensed engineer since 2004, uh, member of the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I'm an adjunct professor at NJIT in the Civil Engineering Department, and I've been accepted as an expert witness in engineering and, uh, traffic engineering in front of over 70 municipalities in the state of New Jersey.
Acceptable. Both as a planner and an engineer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Stimmel, you're familiar with the application that's pending before the board?
Yes, I am.
And you've reviewed the plans submitted?
Yes, I have.
For the application? You've reviewed the pertinent sections of the zoning ordinance as they pertain to this application?
Yes.
Okay. And have you, um, performed an analysis of the variances that are being requested for this application?
I have.
All right, would you provide the board with the benefit of your report, perhaps beginning by discussing the, the zoning that applies to the property?
Uh, certainly. The, uh, primary reason the applicant is here tonight in front of the zoning board is because they are requesting a D6 variance for height which exceeds the requirements of the zone by 10 feet or 10 percent. There are also a few C variances which are impacted by the application, but I'll discuss the, the D variance first. Uh, the zone permits a maximum height of 35 feet whereas 43.86 feet are existing and proposed. So, the existing peak height of the structure will not be exceeded, but it will be matched by the peak of the roof of the proposed addition. As the board members all know, all the D variances require that the applicant satisfy the positive and negative criteria, but the standard of justification for the D6 variance is lesser, lesser than that for the D1 variance which is a new use not permitted in the zone. So, the lesser standard to satisfy the positive criteria relates to addressing the municipality's concern and imposing the height limitation. Uh, so the applicant has to typically for height variances demonstrate, uh, the borough's concerns, uh, or the municipality's concerns related to the intensity of the use and the mass of the structure have been satisfactorily met. Uh, as far as the intensity is concerned, the, the height of the structure doesn't factor into the, uh, medical aspect of the use at all, and it does allow for more living space for the residents as Mr. Siewby just testified to, uh, but the, uh, intensity of the use for residential uses is typically judged based on the number of units. So, the applicant is proposing to maintain the dental office on the ground floor, maintain one upstairs residential unit, so there will be no intensification of either of the uses. Uh, Dr. Rotunda has testified that there will be no more than one professional, one dentist practicing in the facility as a dentist at a given time, uh, so both uses will remain at their current intensity. As far as the mass of the structure, the existing building, uh, with the proposed addition is well below the standards of the zone in terms of the coverage and the height is in keeping with the existing structures along both sides of Park Avenue. Uh, in fact, the structures on the opposite side of Park Avenue across from the site, Park Street, sorry, Park Avenue, Rutherford, Park Street, and Montclair. The structures across Park Street from the site actually, uh, although similar in terms of the structure, appear to be slightly higher due to the change in topography, and the change in topography continues to drop as you move from west to east across the site. Um, so, uh, the structure of the height again is not going to exceed the existing peak height, it's just going to match the existing peak height. Uh, some of the reason for making that or requesting that height variance is for the aesthetics of the structure. Uh, Mr. Siewby has presented a plan which I believe is, uh, aesthetically pleasing, hopefully satisfactory to the board certainly, and there's also the issue of the usable space for the, the residential apartment upstairs. Uh, so, for those reasons, I believe that the positive criteria required to justify the height variance have been satisfied. As far as the negative criteria is concerned, uh, the applicant has to demonstrate that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Uh, again, this is, uh, an existing condition, if you will, that's being maintained, and the height of the structure is in keeping with the, uh, structures along Park Street, so I don't see any, uh, negative impact to the public good or impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance associated with that. Uh, then there were a number of C variances referenced in the planning department memo from May 29th, 2019. Uh, the first is for minimum side yard setback where 20 feet is required, 9.69 feet is existing, and 7.83 feet is proposed. Uh, it's a minor change from the existing condition, you're only talking about 1.8 feet. Uh, the impact really would be limited to the adjoining property to the north. Uh, it's worth noting that as presently situated, the structure on the adjoining property to the north is approximately 46 feet away from, uh, Dr. Rotunda's building, so with the addition in that area, it will be approximately 44 feet away. Uh, based on the large distance between the two structures, this, uh, this is what I sometimes refer to as an invisible variance. Without knowing where the property line is, you would never know that there was a variance there. Uh, the second C variance that was noted in the review letter was for parking within the, the front yard which Talley just brought up. Uh, there's non-permitted three spaces existing and proposed. With the initial application, we had shown a fourth parking space in the front yard off of Walnut Street. Uh, that space has been eliminated, so this is simply the maintenance of an existing non-conformity. Uh, the next C variance is for minimum parking setback which, uh, have to be three feet from the building for the property line whereas zero feet are existing and proposed. I believe this relates to the creation of a second tandem parking space adjacent to the, uh, proposed addition. So, along the property line with, uh, the lot to the north, uh, there's, uh, it's not delineated as such, but there's one parking space in that area now. The applicant is proposing a second parking space there in a tandem configuration, um, and has agreed to provide, uh, landscape screening in that area on the neighbor's property which I believe that the neighbor is willing to, uh, to go along with in order to mitigate any impact from that variance. Uh, the fourth, uh, C variance being requested is for minimum parking supply where 18 parking spaces are required, 14 are proposed. Had been 15 again, but we eliminated that space closest to Walnut Street due to difficulty entering and exiting there. Uh, but it's also worth noting that the applicant has testified that they're maintaining, uh, four off-site parking spaces and, and plan to continue to do so to allay any concerns that the board may have related to the sufficiency of the parking supply. Uh, and certainly, uh, based on Dr. Rotunda's testimony, he indicated that a number of, uh, a number of his patients use existing parking, street parking along Park Street to address their needs. So, with the extensive parking testimony that was previously provided, I believe that the, uh, parking supply proposed for the use is adequate, um, and, uh, I think, uh, would certainly answer any questions related to that. And then finally, the last C variance needed was for parking access where all parking spaces are required to have direct access to an aisle. Three of the parking, three of the parking spaces are tandem in configuration and would not have, uh, direct access, and those will be the, the two pairs of parking spaces in the proposed garage and the other pair of parking spaces adjacent to the proposed garage. Uh, the way those spaces are going to be used are either by Dr. Rotunda and his family or employees of the dental office and, um, you know, the, it's not an uncommon configuration in areas like this to have residential parking with the, with the tandem configuration. Uh, certainly, they're going to be very low turnover parking spaces particularly with Mr., uh, with Dr. Rotunda's classic car that he has sitting there, uh, so we don't see any adverse impact over that. And then finally, there were two design waivers that were noted in the planning department memo. Uh, the first is for trash enclosures for multifamily or commercial developments. Uh, stated that they shall be screened by wood fence or solid walls compatible to the adjacent facades. Uh, the location where the refuse is stored right now is adjacent to the door of the existing garage, so it's well screened from the, uh, roadway by the existing building, uh, screened from the adjoining properties by landscaping and change in topography. Um, and it's a maintenance of an existing condition. Uh, and then finally, the minimum parking setback, four feet from site and rear property lines with landscape screening. And again, uh, it's a maintenance of an existing condition, but the applicant has agreed to provide landscaping on the neighbor's property to the north to address the, uh, uh, screening issue with the parking in that location. Uh, so, uh, I believe, uh, the applicant has provided sufficient justification to satisfy the granting of the requested D and C variance relief. Um, I don't know if, if, uh, Mr. Trembulaq would like me to continue right now or go through the, uh, comments from the engineers reviewing?
Well, we'll, uh, we'll come to the engineering comments in a minute, but just with respect to the C variances, um, do you have an opinion with respect to the negative criteria as it relates to those variances?
I think for the most part, the C variances are all maintenance of existing conditions or, or slight change to the existing conditions. I think the extent of the variance relief is really minimal in nature, um, you know, due to the existing conditions on the site, the proposed, uh, landscaping, the, the proposed acquisition of the off-site parking, I, I feel, uh, in my professional opinion, that there will be no substantial detriment to the public good or impairment of the purposes of the zone plan and zoning ordinance.
Okay. All right, then, switching, uh, hats now and, uh, putting on your, uh, hat as a professional engineer, um, have you had a chance to review the, uh, report from the board engineer, Suburban Consulting Engineers dated March 7th?
I did, yes.
Okay. I'd like to just, uh, question you regarding three, three items. First of all, um, paragraph five of, uh, Mr., how do you say, Buch? Is that how you pronounce it?
Hewitt.
Hewitt. Um, discusses ADA accessibility. Um, can you comment on, um, his comment and discuss whether what's proposed complies with, um, ADA requirements?
Certainly. The, uh, the board engineer noted that the proposed parking lot, uh, well, the existing parking lot which will be maintained does not provide a handicap parking space. Uh, you know, it would theoretically be possible to provide a handicap parking space there, but the elevation of the parking lot is between six and eight feet below the entrance to the building. Uh, so... the building, so the construction of a ramp from the rear parking area around to the front of the building would be cumbersome and quite frankly, wouldn't look very nice. And then, you'd also have the added fact that even though you could do it to meet ADA standards, that someone who had mobility issues would still be required to make the truck up that long ramp with the eight-foot change in elevation and then wrapping around the entire building. As an alternate, we'd like to propose either utilization of the existing curb cut along Park Street and redesigning that to create an ADA compliant handicap ramp, or closing that curb cut and constructing the ramp closer to the existing front entrance of the building. I think the utilization of the existing curb cut would be acceptable, would satisfy ADA standards. There might be some slight modification required to the sidewalk in that area in order to meet the required grades, but I think it's a feasible alternative and would ultimately do a better job of satisfying the ADA requirement than providing the parking space in the on-site parking lot with that extensive ramp construction.
So, the intent would then be that if a handicap person was coming to the office, that they would park on Park Street and enter using that existing curb cut and then going into the front of the proposed addition?
Correct. And I think Dr. Rotunda indicated that that's more or less how it operates, and now he even said that he got a ramp that was made to provide access to the front of the building as it's currently laid out, so we'd more or less maintain that operation just with a little bit better ADA compliance.
And in your opinion, that would satisfy the requirements of ADA?
Yes.
Next, I'd like you to comment on paragraph number eight of the engineer's memo, which deals with stormwater runoff.
Yes, the engineer notes that there's going to be an increase of 744 square feet of improved block coverage and thereby an associated increase in stormwater runoff, and asks that the applicant consider the installation of a seepage pit to infiltrate the increased volume of runoff. That number changes slightly, that 744 square feet, based on the elimination of the first parking space off of Walnut Street driveway. But, that said, the zone permits a maximum improved coverage of 70 percent. The existing site's at about 49.8 percent, and the proposed site would be at about 55.6 percent with that additional parking space. So, slightly less than that, but still well below the 70 percent standard for the zone. The total increase in impervious coverage noted on the initially submitted plans comes from three different areas. Comes from the handicap ramps located on the westerly side of the building, it comes from the portion of the addition which extends further than the existing garage on the northerly side of the building, and then that last parking space which has since been eliminated. So, you know, if you're proposing an increase in coverage in one area, it's relatively easy to capture it, but you're talking about three different portions of the site. It doesn't really lend itself to construction of stormwater improvements. It's not that significant in terms of the overall size of the property, and you know, we're well below the coverage requirement, so we would, our preference would be to not construct a seepage pit or other stormwater management device.
Okay. And the engineer's comment was a suggestion that the applicant can consider the installation of the seepage pit, and it's fair to say you've considered that, and in your professional opinion, it's not required.
Correct.
And that there would be no adverse effects from the stormwater runoff, the additional stormwater runoff resulting from the added impervious coverage.
Correct. It would be a relatively minor change.
Okay. The last thing I'd like you to address, I think it's mentioned in the engineer's report, but it was also discussed at the last meeting. Have you looked at the size of the proposed parking spaces to be located on the northerly side of the garage, between the garage and the property line for the adjacent property?
I did, yes.
And that's where I think Mr., Dr. Rotunda testified that he currently utilizes a space there that was previously approved by this board, and he parks his vintage Ford Mustang there, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So, have you looked at that, because that space is going to shrink a little bit in view of the slightly expanded footprint? And of course, the question is, you know, is the space provided sufficient to accommodate parking of two cars as proposed?
Yes. I think the first thing I wanted to mention was that it was brought up by one of the board members, possibly the chairman at the last meeting, that there were two prior surveys of the property submitted with the application materials. The first showed the older survey from John Doolittle and Company from 1997, showed a side setback of 10.8 feet adjacent to the garage, and the more updated survey from Richard Hingos from September of 2018 showed 9.69 feet for the side yard setback to the garage. So, it's a difference of a little bit over a foot between the two surveys. I think the discrepancy comes from the fact that the side of that garage is not perfectly parallel to the property line, so as you move away from Park Street, the garage angles away from the property line slightly. So, I think that, it appears that it's a little bit hard to eyeball it, but it appears that that angle is going to be maintained with the proposed addition with the understanding that the addition will be a little bit closer to the property line. So, it'll be 7.83 feet at the closest point to the property line, and I scaled this off, roughly eight and a half feet off the property line at the furthest point. So, the typical car is about six feet wide, no more than six and a half feet wide. Would be room to fit in there, although it's certainly not the easiest parking space to get in and out of. I think the stipulation that those parking spaces be restricted to employees of the practice and as well as Dr. Rotunda and his family would limit the turnover of those parking spaces, would prevent patients from parking there who may not be familiar with the layout of the parking spaces, and would address many of the board's concerns related to the operation of those spaces. So, you know, the parking is tight, but I think it's an attempt to make the best use of the space, try to comply to the fullest extent possible with the parking requirement of the ordinance. So, with those considerations, I think it's an acceptable location for parking.
Okay. Thank you very much. No further questions, Mr. Chair.
You mentioned four off-site parking spaces?
Yes.
Where's that located?
I would have to defer to Dr. Rotunda. I believe it was Catty Corner to the site across the intersection of Park and Walnut.
I can respond to that. Currently, it's at 161 Walnut Street, which is on the opposite side of Walnut Street, I think a few doors down from Park Street. It's a law office, I believe, that David Tyke Culture, I think is the attorney who practices there and owns that property.
And to your knowledge, how often are those spaces actually in use?
And Dr. Rotunda would have to answer that. I think his testimony was that he encourages, if not requires, staff to park there so that the spaces behind the building are available for patients.
Is there anything in writing?
Is that correct?
Do you have anything in writing?
About the?
Those four spaces.
Yes, there is an agreement in place, and I think we indicated at the last meeting that, you know, we would stipulate that we would have to maintain those four parking spaces either at that location or at a similar location within walking distance to the building.
And for the record, I'd like to have a copy of the agreement for the file.
Sure. I think I have a copy with me, but if I don't, we can get it.
Thank you.
Other questions?
There you go.
Other questions from members of the board? Ms. Allen?
I have a question about the handicap parking space on Park Street. How would you sign that to indicate that that is handicapped parking?
Well, I believe Park Street is municipal roadway. I think there would need to be some approval from the municipality to allow the signage of that parking space. I don't think it would be designated as a handicap parking space for Dr. Rotunda's office, but I think it would be available to Dr. Rotunda's office or the adjoining medical office, you know, much in the way street parking is available now, just with that designated as handicap compliant.
And what's the, so what you're proposing is to take the curb cut? I don't know the length of the curb cut. Is that a 20-foot wide curb cut and make that the handicap parking spot?
Looks to be a curb cut for a typical residential driveway, so I'd say it's probably about 12 feet wide right now. It would probably need some modification to comply with ADA standards in terms of maximum slopes. So, you know, it would be reconstructed, a plan would be submitted to the engineering department or the planning department, and you know, any issues, I think, would be taken care of at that point.
Right. I think in order for it to be considered a handicap parking space, you'd need to have the signage to make those improvements. Got another comment here. The two parking spaces that you're proposing on the north side of the garage, and I believe we talked about this before, we require that the parking spaces be screened. And if you only have 7.83 feet, maybe eight feet as you go east, how do you propose to screen those spaces from the neighbors?
The, Dr. Rotunda had indicated, and I believe the neighbors testified at the last meeting, that they would be, Dr. Rotunda would be willing to install landscape screening on their property to screen the spaces, and the neighbors were agreeable to that.
Okay, so that would be a condition of approval, I would assume. Okay. Those are my two questions.
So, the board engineer had a number of comments that you didn't go over. Some, a couple were rendered somewhat moved by the changes to the plan, but you want to just go through, so I understand, you know, I think number one was addressed by, largely by Dr. Rotunda's testimony. Two, I think, has been addressed by the testimony. Three has been addressed. Four has been addressed. You addressed five. Six, you've addressed, I'm not sure I'm totally satisfied, but it's been addressed. I think seven, we've been discussing, but I am, you know, it's, you know, I will, I guess my question is, I mean, you seem to be indicating that those spaces will be paved to the parking, to the property line in order to achieve the width you're indicating, is that correct?
Correct.
And whose obligation would it be to maintain the screening on the neighbor's property? Well, I think Dr. Rotunda would certainly agree to undertake that obligation, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The, one of, number eight you addressed, but I still want to pursue that a little further, particularly since your pavement's going to go up to the property line in terms of, one of the comments of the historic preservation commission was to show the roof leaders from the addition, and I guess now that we know that that area next to the addition is going to all be paved to the parking lot, where are those, where's the runoff from the addition going to be directed? And I don't think the plans show, and...
The general pattern of the runoff based on the Hingo survey is that the runoff to the north of the building flows toward the rear and then goes out the driveway. Similarly, the runoff to the front of the building facing Park Street runs to the south-southeast, so the existing drainage pattern would be maintained with the proposed paving in that area. Where the roof leaders discharge, I don't think has been exactly determined, but I think it would make sense to discharge on the downhill side because that's where it ultimately ends up anyway.
But, that's where if they discharge on the western side of the proposed pavement, the proposed addition, and you put a seepage pit in there, then you would better control that runoff. Otherwise, you're looking at a fair amount of runoff going into a fairly confined area, which I think would end up impacting either the neighbor to the north or the neighbor to the east.
If the seepage pit, I think, is a sticking point with the board and subject to verification from the client, my recommendation would be to put it on the downhill side of the proposed addition, connect the roof leaders to the seepage pit in that area, and then have an open grate for discharge so that if there was any overflow from the seepage pit, that it would just follow the existing runoff.
So, the leaders would go directly into the seepage pit, and then there'd be a grate so it overflowed, it would bubble out?
The leaders from the addition would go to the seepage pit, the leaders from the existing structure would go as they go now, assuming that it didn't create any other drainage issues on the site. And then, as you said, the runoff would bubble up through the grate, or overflow would bubble up through the grate and out the driveway, which follows the existing pattern.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if it's helpful, but we would certainly agree to a condition that we would have to satisfy the board engineer with respect to the stormwater runoff and the issues we were discussing. And, because again, his comment was to consider installation of a seepage pit, which suggests that it may not be required or there might be other ways to control the runoff, and again, we would be agreeable to a broadly worded condition that we would have to come up with a strategy to satisfy the board engineer with respect to those concerns about runoff noted in paragraph eight of his memo. And then, his comment 11 concerns lighting, and do you know what new lighting is going to be proposed? I believe Mr. Sweeby discussed that at the last meeting. Oh, there was?
There was a handout.
I don't recall specifically, but Mr. Sweeby can certainly come up and perhaps discuss that.
This was the handout. I think it was exhibit either A or 1.
Oh, I have that.
It was both. It was A1.
A1.
And then, page 6 has a landscaping lighting diagram. That shows location of proposed lighting. We don't have specification yet on what the actual picture will be, but we're intending to, the board matching the existing building lights that are there now.
Okay. I guess what I, I think what the engineer was driving at, in which this diagram doesn't really help us on, is there are lighting, you know, requirements on the property in terms of making sure the parking is adequately lit, and also requirements that the lighting not exceed levels at the property line, and that's what I'm trying to get a sense of, whether both there's enough lighting and not too much lighting. Well, can you discuss the additional lighting that's proposed? First of all, is there any additional lighting proposed in the rear of the building?
On the parking lot side, no. It's, there is an existing fixture on the garage. We're intending to reinstall that at the northeast corner.
Okay. What about the Walnut Street side of the property? Is there any additional lighting proposed there?
No.
Okay. And what additional lighting, if any, is proposed for the front of the property facing Park Street?
So, we have new ground-mounted uplights that would illuminate the building, one at the northwest corner, near the northwest corner of the addition. There's recessed downlight at the new portico that would illuminate the landing at the top of the ramp. There's also ground-mounted light toward the south end of the addition, also illuminating the... the facade. And there will be a new building-mounted motion sensor on the northwest corner of the existing building to illuminate the ramp when people are using it. Those are only, so four proposed on the west side.
Are there existing ground-mounted lights?
Yes.
Today?
Yes.
And so what's proposed would be similar ground-mounted lights for the, for the addition? Is that correct?
Identical, yes.
Okay.
I think one of the issues is that the site plan standards for lighting changed since the original site plan was, was approved way back when. So, I would feel more comfortable if this site plan was amended to show how your proposed lighting plan meets our current requirements in terms of the level of illumination in the parking lot, and for the areas where people will be walking around the building.
I think we would agree to a condition that we would have to submit a lighting plan for review and approval by whomever the board...
And also ensuring that there's no spillover on the adjacent properties.
Of course.
Any further questions for either of the professionals?
I have one question. Your plan shows two condensing units on the Park Street side. How are those being screened?
Technically, it would be screened by the ramp.
Will the ramp be tall enough in front of those units to screen them properly?
On criteria.
Sorry?
It would depend on the criteria and what the screen, if you're completely...
Yes.
Full height of the condenser?
Yes.
If not, we can do, we can amend the landscaping to include...
Okay. Yeah, I would like to make that a condition as well.
Going back to parking, how, so, based on the spaces that are being recommended for employees, how many spaces are available for patients?
I think maybe Ms., Dr. Rotunda would have to really answer that.
No, this is, this is, I'm going after the engineer's testimony and his justification for the variance as to the, my understanding is the six, six of the spaces on the site are being reserved for residents or employees, and the four off-site spaces are being reserved for employees. And I want to get, I'm aiming at the adequacy of the remaining parking for the patients from a planning perspective.
Yes, there are eight parking spaces provided on the site now, which are available to patients, and they also have the opportunity to use the existing street parking along Park Street. Put my notes to find the operational testimony. Dr. Rotunda, I believe, had indicated that there were typically three patients being worked on at a given time, three patients waiting. For some reason, there was another patient there, early, late emergency. He anticipated a maximum of seven patients on the site at a given time. So, we've got the eight spaces on, on the site, and then additional street parking as needed, in addition to the fact that there is a bus stop in front of the property. He indicated that, you know, given the location, people do occasionally use mass transit or, or walk to the site.
And the, in order to, what happens if the township refuses to go along with providing handicap space on Park Street?
Well, I suppose the alternative then would either be to use that existing curb cut off of Park Street and create just enough space there to pull in and make handicap space there, and connect that to the handicap entrance to the building. Or the alternative to that would be to create the space at the rear of the site in the existing parking area, and then build that extensive ramp up to the front of the building. Constructing a handicap space in the existing parking area would result in the loss of the space. And I, to be honest, and I said this before, I don't know how, how usable that space would be. Providing the space at the front of the site where there's that existing curb cut off of Park Street would add a parking space to the proposed development.
Well, but, I mean, it couldn't be guaranteed to patients.
Well, couldn't, couldn't a handicap lift be provided from the, instead of doing a ramp in the back? I've seen where you have a lift to get people into the building.
I mean, could it be done? Sure. How usable is it?
Well, the question is, if you put it in the front, that's another variance, and I know you're, where the curb cut is, that's another variance that...
I mean, that's what I'm, I'm struggling to, I mean, one, I want to make sure we're ADA compliant and not just saying, "Go build..."
Right.
"...something that is not meeting ADA requirements." And from Dr. Rotunda's point of view, he needs to be ADA compliant, because there are these nice people who travel about the world and find buildings that are not compliant, and sue the owners thereof, and it, you know, I just think, I mean, it's everybody's interest we do this, and, you know, I think where I'm heading, just so Mr. Tremblak's aware, is I think, you know, we'll, we'll require that the building, and this does a number of issues, be ADA compliant, and that you apply to the township to have a handicap dedicated space created along Park Street, and the necessary improvements to make that space compliant, because the work is going to be done within the township right away, both in terms of providing the ramp grade that complies, and that might require alterations to the public sidewalk. And, you know, I think if that doesn't work, you're probably back here because you're, whether you need a variance for the lift, or you need a variance for one less parking space, we'll get to see you again.
Hopefully not, I guess.
But I, you know, I don't think we have a choice but to require the ADA compliance, and I think, you know, I, you know, I think there's a logic to the township approving it, but that's not within our control. And there may be other issues that we're not aware of. Okay, any other questions, members of the board?
I have a question about that point. I mean, would an off-street, or on-street, a handicap parking space fulfill the requirement for this property to be ADA accessible?
Okay, so, one of the reasons I am saying it has to be ADA compliant is to partially duck that issue as to whether doing that meets that or not. I am going to let, but that's why I want the condition, so it's clear, we're not making the judgment that that is making the property ADA compliant or not. Okay, any other questions from members of the board? Any members of the audience who have questions for this witness? Okay. Mr. Tremblak, do you have any further witnesses?
No, we don't, Mr. Chair. That concludes our case.
Okay, are there any members of the public who have testimony, statements, comments that they wish to make on the application?
Did you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board? State your name and address.
John Reiman, architect, 189 Highland, Claire. I'm here representing the Historic Preservation Commission. We appreciate that the applicant is 5357891011.
And 15.
Although, as I understood it, there wasn't really much in terms of lighting on the side, because it's all downlighting and uplighting.
And there's no additional signage either?
There is none, I guess. Our comments, our other comments, our comments in general, just the intent was that the building should, the addition should be subservient to the original historic house, smaller, less complicated. Now, the double to one on the new addition is confusing, makes the addition more working to the old, say, more historic, all of that. As far as the second tier area of interior standards, whether that should be required or not, you know, this is reviewed, this is referred to Historic Preservation Commission, and we view it from a certain lens, by certain standards. We're just suggesting that that's...
Are there any other members of the audience who have comments concerning the application? Mr. Tremblak, do you want any summation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and thank you for the board's time in considering this application. Dr. Rotunda has owned this property for approximately 25 years, and during those 25 years, he's lived on the upper floors of the house, and he's operated his dental practice on the first floor. Nothing will change as far as that's concerned. Property has been maintained in excellent condition, as I think the board can see. I know the board's reviewed, visited the property. And it's also obvious that Dr. Rotunda has maintained an excellent relationship with his neighbors, as evidenced by the fact that two neighbors came out to speak in favor of the application, and the neighbors most affected by this application, particularly the owner of the adjoining property on 85 Park Street, I think was very adamant in his support of, of this project. No one has spoken in opposition to the application. The purpose of the addition, as it's been testified to, is to provide better living space for Dr. Rotunda's growing family, and also to provide a more efficient operation and to better service his patients. There is not, we're not proposing any intensification whatsoever to the current use of the property. The office will be expanded, and that triggers an additional parking requirement. However, in actuality, there will be no additional parking demand generated by this, as Dr. Rotunda testified. He'd indicated that the existing parking arrangement that he has works, he's never had a parking problem, and that although the size of his office is being increased, there will be no additional dentists working there, and he indicated at most, there may be one additional employee. So, it currently works now with fewer spaces than, than we're proposing. And admittedly, you know, the plan that was presented tried to maximize as much as possible, how much parking we can put onsite, not because we need it, but in an effort to minimize the deficiency variance and to provide as much parking as the town ordinance provides. You know, we've squeezed those two spaces in along the side of the building on the northerly side. It's admittedly tight, but it works, and particularly since those spaces would be limited to use by either Dr. Rotunda's family or staff, you would not have patients going in and out of that. And, I don't know, I think Dr. Rotunda may continue to restore his, his vintage car there for a while, but it, it works. You know, we don't need those spaces candidly, based upon Dr. Rotunda's testimony. He's gone out really in anticipation of the, of this application, and rented spaces across the street to, again, try to provide for this board the amount of spaces that this board or this town requires, even though he doesn't need them. We've agreed to maintain the existing arrangement, renting spaces either at 161 Walnut Street, or if that agreement were to be terminated, at another location within reasonable walking With respect to the other variances that are, that we're seeking, with respect to the height variance, we do need a D variance, as Mr. Stimmel pointed out, because our proposed, proposal is to exceed the maximum permitted height of 35 feet by more than 10 percent. However, the height that we're proposing matches the existing height, or the height of the existing building, which is approximately 44 feet. And I think most importantly, it matches the height of the buildings in the immediate vicinity, particularly the buildings on Park Street, which is, you know, this house faces Park Street, the other houses adjacent to the north on Park Street have similar heights, and, and also the, the height across the street. So, I don't, I don't think, there's certainly no negative impact or detriment to the neighbors by allowing the addition to maintain the same height as the existing structure. And there's a need for it, as testified to by Mr. Sweeney. With respect to the side yard variance on the northerly side, again, it's somewhat of an existing condition, because the garage structure is there, is, is, already intrudes into the required setback. Obviously, that would be exacerbated a bit by the addition, but it is somewhat of an existing condition. And most importantly, as, as Mr. Stimmel pointed out, there's a substantial distance. You could probably put another house between this building and the building on the adjoining property. It's 44 feet distance, which certainly mitigates any adverse impact of the deficient side yard. And also, as I've already mentioned, the owner of 85 Park Street was one of the two people who came to the last meeting and indicated that they, that had no objection and were supporting what Dr. Rotunda seeks to do. The other parking variances, again, the tandem spaces of, as we indicated, the garage spaces would be utilized by Dr. Rotunda and his family. The two spaces, if the board allows them, adjacent to the northerly side, would also be restricted to use by staff, only not available for use by parking. Granted, those variances, you know, has a benefit of allowing us to provide more onsite parking. Also, and I think has already been mentioned, there is available on-street parking on Park Street. I know there's a bus zone directly in front, but there's, I believe, no parking restrictions as you, as you go northerly down Park Street. So, and then the design waivers, I mean, the existing trash is maintained in garbage cans that are really tucked away in the back of the property. We don't think a trash enclosure is necessary. It's no different than really a normal residential situation with garbage cans located in the rear of the property. It's really not, not visible by anyone. And so, I think, you know, the variances are justified. I guess I should comment on the HPC. You know, we've, we've tried to comply as much as possible with the HPC's 15 recommendations. You know, the only, one thing I take issue with, Mr. Reiman has referred to this as an historic property. It's not an historic property. It potentially could be, but it's not designated as an historic property under the township ordinance. It's not in an historic district. Ordinance requires that applications like this be referred to the HPC for comment. HPC has no approval authority whatsoever over this application, and I think it's improper to sort of give them implied authority and force this applicant or any applicant to comply with recommendations that apply, you know, to historically designated... with recommendations that apply, you know, to historically designated properties, which this is not. And so, in terms of conditions, I'm going to give a list of the conditions that I believe we've discussed and that are agreeable to the applicant. First of all, we indicated we would provide a cross-easement agreement between Dr. Rotunda and the adjoining property at 85 Park Street relating to the shared driveway that they use. We've agreed to maintain an arrangement to rent at least four spaces, either at 161 Walnut Street or another property within reasonable walking distance. We've agreed to comply with the eight sections of the HPC report. I believe there's three conditions, perhaps four, in the engineer's report. Specifically, we would agree to paragraph two, which recommends that the tandem spaces on the side of the building be dedicated to residential use, or all the tandem spaces be dedicated to residential use and employees. We've indicated we would agree to that. We'd also agree to his comments in paragraph nine and 10 of the report. Paragraph 10 talks about additional landscaping along the north property line, which we've already agreed we would install with the neighbors' consent to shield the two parking spaces along that side of the property. We've also agreed to submit a lighting plan for review and approval by whatever representative the board might designate. We've agreed that the basement will not be used for office space. We've, let's see, I think there was some discussion about screening for, was it a condenser unit that Ms. Harris raised, and that's acceptable certainly. And then the requirement with regard to the handicap parking space as articulated by the chair, I think that's a reasonable requirement and actually a benefit to the applicant, and that's acceptable as well. So, subject to those conditions, I would request respectfully that the board approve this application as presented and grant site plan approval, as well as the variances that we've requested. Thank you again for your time.
Start with Ms. Harris.
I understand the need for more space here, and I'm generally in favor with the application. In terms of the two tandem spaces, I really don't understand how useful they will be. You know, it's going to be hard to open car doors in such a tight space, depending on where the landscaping is, so, and my doctor's office is right across the street from there. There's, it's never, this parking lot never seems full when I'm there, so with the street parking and the additional four spaces that are leased, I'm not sure how necessary or useful those two tandem spaces are. But also too, I think that would be contingent upon the decision of the handicap parking space. If they have to dedicate a handicap space on the site, of course, more parking will be needed, so we would have to consider that. The addition generally, to me, seems very bulky and heavy-handed. I don't think that matching the existing peak height does any favors aesthetically. It seems, like I said, very heavy-handed, and I think that there's still ways to create usable space within that attic space without having such a high roof line. And I also, even though it's not, I don't think it's something that we can decide upon, but the peak at those double doors also seems overly complicated. But in general, I'm in favor of the application.
Mr. Simon.
I'm generally in favor of the application. I think it's admirable that the doctor is trying to make improvements while remaining in town instead of picking up and relocating. The design is busy, but I think the original design also leads to those challenges. One thing I didn't hear in your agreement was the mention of the stormwater agreement.
Oh, yes, I apologize for that. We would, as I indicated, we would agree to a broadly worded condition that we would have to satisfy the board engineer with respect to those concerns, whether it's with the seepage pit or something else that meets his approval.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Other than that, I'm in favor.
Mr. Church.
I'd be in favor of the application also, but I mirror the comments of Ms. Harris that this is a very bulky addition to that corner, that part of Park Street. I'm a little concerned about the people that live on the downside of the property on Walnut Street from the standpoint of, and you did address it, and I think it should be a condition, it should be noted in the approval, that the, a seepage pit be put in on the downside of that property because the increased runoff will create a problem, I think, for the people on the downside of that property. So, that should be, there should be accommodation made to them with the seepage pit adequate to handle of runoff determined by an engineering survey. But I am, I'd be in favor of the parking and the other requests, but this is one big bulky piece of property, and I'm a little, I think it's at the edge of where I would find it, of where I'd want to approve it. It's just on the edge. I think it's just too much for that corner, but I will go along with my colleagues to this point and say I would approve it with the condition that paragraph eight of the engineering report be considered and adopted.
Mr. McCullough.
I'm also in agreement with this application. I think, you know, there has been a fair attempt to architecturally make it comply with the properties in the same area. It is, it is quite large, but I also understand that the intent is to make adequate living accommodations, which I think is an important consideration here. I do remember from the testimony from the previous meeting that there was concern about trying to, on the part of the residential space, trying to access two levels, and so there's, I think, a strong attempt to try to maximize as much as possible on one level while still providing some additional space on a second level, which I think is probably wise, given the fact that, again, you have to look at properties not only in terms of the immediate needs, but also what are the longer-term needs in terms of, you know, who ultimately might use that space beyond the current occupants. So, I'm in favor of this.
Mr. Allen.
Well, I'm glad to see a Montclair resident trying to stay in Montclair. I didn't see too much pushback from the neighbors, so I guess the plan doesn't seem to be too bulky for them, which would be important. So, I generally approve this with the myriad of conditions that are going to be attached to it, and, you know, wish you luck.
Mr. Caulfield.
I'm not in favor of this plan. My concerns are, I mean, I know it fits the needs of the doctor for his living and work experience, but my concern is down the line of what this project's going to look like 50 years or going down. I don't know how that's going to fit through, for the community itself. The doctor did testify that the existing conditions, as he speaks, are kind of dangerous for his kids. I'm concerned about that. I just wish that we could have maybe downsized it in some bit and taken out maybe some of the bulk of the addition. Thank you.
So, I think, going to try and do the variances one by one, and the height variance, I share my colleague's concerns, I just don't know how to deal with it. I think they have justified a height variance. I think they've justified the more than 10% height variance, and it's, you know, I don't know enough about how, when could we design the roof to lower it somewhat and still create a, you know, not necessarily the exact square footage that they're proposing, but something, you know, approximate, you know, having a usable room, and I might, you know, so I'm not overly troubled by that, though to some degree that ties into the next variance, which is the side yard variance. You know, typically, we have approved additions that encroach on side yards, but no more than the...
Existing.
Existing, they're proposing to go approximately a foot closer, little more than a foot closer to the side yard with what is a very big addition. You know, you're going from a single-story garage basically to a multi-story 43-foot-high building, which is a very different impact on the side yard. They've eliminated the variance for the new front yard parking space. The variance that I'm probably most troubled by is the parking for the two spaces that are, should be three feet from the building and three feet from the property line, and basically, the parking space is going to be from the building to the parking, to the property line. I don't, I just think, it's nice that Mr. Rotunda and his neighbor get along, and they're all amenable to this, but I really don't want to set a precedent where you provide screening on an adjacent property to a commercial parking lot. I just think that is making a tremendous mistake, that is going to cause problems in the future, not with the current owner, but down the road. I just see, you know, we can impose a condition that says Dr. Rotunda is responsible for maintaining that variance, but that means, you know, legally, he has to ask permission each time he goes over on the property. The, I don't have a problem with the tandem parking for the garage spaces. You know, I think realistically, the, that, you know, given, once we provide a condition that they're limited to residents or employees, that that addresses the normal concern with access. The parking deficit, which I'm probably making worse, I think, based on the testimony, they are providing, even if we eliminate the two spaces on the north side of the addition, they are, one, providing for eight spaces for residents and number of employees, and Dr. Rotunda kind of counts as both, so I'm, it's not like when he's working there, he has one car, and when he's living there, it's a different parking, so I think there's that overlap, and I, you know, my sense, and I drive by the property often enough, is that, you know, the six spaces that are available for patients are adequate, and I think besides, well, may not be necessary for spaces in a garage to say that Republicans park there, but I think maybe if signing the spaces along the easterly property line for patients only to discourage employees from parking there may be helpful. You know, I don't have a problem with the two waivers. You know, I think, you know, I mean, I think where I'm coming out on balance is I'm willing to give the side yard variance for the addition, but not give the variance for the two parking spaces north of the addition and do that, but, you know, I...
And increase the deficit, the parking deficit overall.
Hmm.
So, we would increase the parking deficit overall from three to five, right?
Right. You know, I think, well, it's actually going from four to six because we, they eliminated the one space. The conditions, I wasn't counting on having this many. Okay, so that the applicant do a cross-easement with the neighboring property owner, subject to the approval of the board's attorney, for access to their properties and parking areas, that the previously approved office space on the ground level be unapproved, and Mr. Sullivan will have nicer wording than that, would that be eliminated, that they maintain at least four off-site parking spaces for employees in proximity to the property in the event the current arrangement goes away, that the stormwater be designed in accordance with the requirements of the board engineer. This is going to change if we eliminate the two-side parking lots, but that's between the applicant and the board's engineer as to how that should be designed, but that, given that, I don't want to specifically require a specific result, that the parking space closest to Walnut Street be eliminated. That the condenser unit be properly screened, that the applicant comply with ADA requirements, and that the applicant, and I'm not indicating whether this will or will not meet compliance with ADA requirements, but the applicant apply to the governing body for creation of a dedicated, of a handicap space along Park Street, and any necessary improvements in the Park Street right-of-way to render that space conforming, both the parking space and access to the sidewalk conforming with ADA requirements. That the applicant submit a lighting plan, that the applicant comply with the lighting requirements and the ordinance, both as to the illumination onsite and not exceeding the illumination at the property line, and that be submitted to the board's engineer And that no more than one dentist be practicing on the property at any one time. I think I picked up...
What about the HPC conditions?
Oh, yes. See, write something very short, and just, okay, that, as indicated, the applicant will comply with, I have a solution. Conditions three, five, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 15. 15 is probably redundant of what I did with the lighting, but we can keep that, that two, I have to think. to, I have to think, that the, and then that they comply with condition 12 to deal with the single roof door. But the one I'm struggling with, and I don't know, I'm, because it gets us where we wanna go, but I'm not sure how we know, it's the applicant shall provide a roof plan for review, which may be a way of addressing Ms. Harris's concern, but I don't really want them to come back here, and I'm nervous about the historic preservation commission.
And I don't think it's wanting to address my concerns.
Okay, so, so the only one we're adding to what they agreed to would be number 12. Okay, any other-
Hold on, Mr. Tremblay indicated they would comply with items two, nine, and 10 in the suburban consulting engineer report, you wanna add that also?
Yeah, I mean, I think we covered nine, but yes, I mean, if, we don't need to do any-
Four.
Yes.
One question. You said you were eliminating the parking spaces north of the driveway, correct?
We're not granting a variance for them, which probably means they're being eliminated unless they do some clever redesign with the building.
So, if that area is currently paved, are we saying that has to be broken up and landscaped?
I don't think it's currently paved.
I believe it's gravel.
It's gravel currently, and I'm doing nothing with that.
Okay.
Any other discussion, conditions, removing conditions?
Just wanna make sure the board understands that because there is a D variance involved in this, you do need five affirmative votes in order to have it approved. Everybody is eligible.
Someone wanna make a motion?
Motion to accept the application, approve the application with the conditions mentioned by the chairman.
Do a roll call, I think is probably the best.
Are we going variance by variance, or?
Well, okay, so, rather not, but we can, okay, so, we need a different motion then. Okay, so, my understanding, as stated, the motion would be approving the height variance, approving the side yard setback variance, approving a greater-than-requested parking space variance, and approving the variance for allowing the stacked park, and approving the two waivers. It would be denying the variance from the requirement that parking spaces be three feet from the building and three feet from the parking line. I think that's the only one we're denying, would be denying, would be the effect, I, if people are more comfortable breaking that out, we can break it out, or?
I mean, we can, we can vote on it altogether, it's fine.
Let's see what happens, and then if it fails, we will do it one by one.
Okay.
Did we get a second? I can't remember.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough. Mr. Church.
This is for approval?
Yes, except for the denial of the one variance, which is requiring a setback of three feet from the building, and three feet from the property line.
And with a bunch of conditions.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Caulfield.
No.
And Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Okay, the application's approved.
Thank you very much.
Subject to that one denial. Ms. Harris, can you hand down your signed certification form?
Do we wanna take a break now, or do the other one?
What do I do?
Break now, okay. We'll take a recess until 25 of 10, and if the next application can get set up, that would be good, for 207 Bellevue Avenue.
We're on a break.
As we actually used to meet just as close as much. And when I first started, we started over here on the mat.
So you made it like a master plan.
Yeah, but now it's so busy.
This is probably what it is. It's just the words just.
You know, he gives me the full stuff.
But it's the same token, you know, it's like, hey, you can't fill it. And, you know, you work with it a little bit.
The same with ecstasy if we get the province. Is there a timing?
Yeah, six months, but to start the work. To start the work. But once you put one nail in, it can, you know, you have everything. As long as you put a nail in, you know.
So there's no, like, inspiration?
No, there is. They would eventually, yeah, but, you know, for starting it. They want you to act on it. But you're not even able to be getting here.
Does that mean another one?
Well, not only have you go to bed, you'll have to go to any other meeting.
What comes after this?
Well, have to go to the building. And then, you know, wins the plan, food plan.
At this again?
No, not like this. Just formally, just send them in. It'll take two or three days before they can do it.
All right, so we're talking about the form.
We're talking about the form.
Okay, the next application is out of Margaret Dubonavich, owner of property at 207 Bellevue Avenue. This is an application for variance to construct a roof addition to an existing one-story commercial building. The property is in the NC Neighborhood Commercial Zone District and is designated on the Township Tax Maps as Lot 15 and Block 2,602. A variance is requested from Montclair Code Section 347-95A1 to permit a maximum building height for non-residential buildings greater than 24 feet. A variance is also requested from Montclair Code Section 347-95C3 to permit a rear yard setback less than the required 20 feet. Are taxes paid and is the notice in order?
Yes, both are in order.
Are all three of you going to testify?
I believe so.
Everybody shook their head no. Okay, so let's start again. Who's going to testify?
I like myself.
You and me.
Okay, well, you two both raise your right hands. Do you swear to tell the truth in a matter pending before the board?
Yes.
State your names and addresses, please.
I'm Jessica Dubonavich, and I do.
Your address?
My address?
Yes.
Terminated address, 74 Timberbrook Road, Rockaway, New Jersey, 07866.
Okay, your name and address?
Glenn Bougan.
Can you spell that?
Bougan, B-O-U-G-H-T-O-N.
Okay.
Mr. Bougan, your address?
253 Germantown Road, West Milford, New Jersey.
Okay, you want to explain what you're doing and why?
So there's, my mother here owns the property at 207 Bellevue Avenue, and there's been a automotive business operating.
Mr. Church, hold on, were you going to?
I, I see.
Okay, yes. Mr. Church is recusing himself on this application, so. So you should, well, you can go sit in the audience, yes.
Okay.
Got it.
The rear building in the back, though, has a flat roof. That's been the original roof, I believe, on the building, and it is suffering leaks time and time again, and the current tenant who's operating the business there complains about it often, and it's interrupting his business doings, impacting his work when it rains a lot, especially in the winter when it ice is over and then it thaws out again. So we are proposing to put a pitch group on it to help protect the building better, and the interior too, because it's leaking into the inside and damaging the brick a little bit and just interrupting the business functions there. So we're looking to preserve the building, protect this business better, and have something more sustainable in long term that doesn't need to be repaired multiple times every year.
Questions from members of the board?
Let me just, just so it's clear what you're asking for, you do not require site plan approval. However, you're asking for a variance because the maximum building height that's allowed is 24 feet, and you're asking for a variance to allow 26 feet. That's a C variance, that's unlike the height variance we had in the last application. And then you're also seeking a rear yard setback variance because the rear yard setback requirement is 20 feet, and the roof addition will result in a rear yard setback of 10.55 feet. Is that correct?
Yes, but I think the building where it sits now, it has that variance, it's less than 20 feet.
Okay, so is that, Janice, is that being, is that being increased by this application or is it just matching the existing condition?
No, I think it's because of the height.
Yeah, because the building goes up on an angle, I guess, the roof will be a pitch roof. I think that's why they're asking for the rear yard variance.
Yeah, because you're putting a pitched roof in the rear yard.
In the rear yard, yes.
And there's, and the building right now is 10 feet from the rear yard, and the ordinance requires 20 feet?
Yes.
And that the higher roof is going to be part of that, in that rear yard. That's why there's the rear yard setback variance.
Is it, is it great, I just want to make sure I understand, is it encroaching further than the existing or is it matching the existing non-conformity?
It's matching the existing. It's starting from the existing and going up on an angle towards the center of the ridge.
Got it, okay.
Right, but it is going to be a higher roof back there.
Yes, it's going to be higher, yes.
Thank you.
So the roof, it's not going to project or is it matching the existing roof's extended existing area?
That's what the testimony is, yes.
You're the architect, I guess?
No, I'm the contractor.
Oh, the contractor. The height of the roof will be 26 feet, is that my close call?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's only at the peak of the roof, as you saw that?
Yeah, we scaled it to the front. It's going to be 20, it's 26 feet at the front. That's the highest part of the roof and the lowest part of the grade.
Other questions from members of the board? Okay, I'm still working on the yard variance and the, this, the two side elevations on, well, I guess it doesn't, whether you're looking at the front or the back, it's showing, and I'm trying to understand, is whether you're matching, with, the roof comes down a slope and hits the edge of something. Is that what's existing or is that now being extended out?
Nothing is being extended. We're building on the existing barren walls that are, you know, already there.
Is the overhang on this roof?
There is an overhang on it, yes.
Is it wider than what's there?
There's already an overhang on the existing, a slight overhang on the existing, we're not extending the overhang.
Okay, so the existing building has an overhang on all four sides that?
It varies because it's cut up. That's one of the reasons we're doing it. It's not consistent, you know, the overhang isn't consistent, there's parapet walls, there's dog houses on top of it, there's all kinds of variations on it, you know, from that standpoint.
Okay, but just in terms of the rear of the building now, is, let's start off with, is that uniform across the back in terms of its relationship to the rear property line?
There's two different elevations on the flat roof, and then there's a pitch roof in the center, a small little pitch roof. Do you have a picture of that, Jesse? That would probably be the best if we can show you a picture.
Can I bring up some photos for you?
Yeah.
Bring you to see what you're doing first. How many photographs do we have here?
Five or six there. They're just photos of the existing building and the roof that exists there.
Okay, we're going to just mark these six photographs collectively as Exhibit A1.
So the, do you have the same photos there or?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I'll make it. So where, the photos are showing the brown edging around the top of the building.
Yes.
Is that also in the back of the building?
Is it in the back?
Yes, I think if you look at the third picture in your deck and look to the right side, you kind of see that red edge floating on the top corner of the building. I believe that's the same form or in the backside, but.
And my understanding of your testimony is the edge of the roof you'll be constructing will not extend any further than that edging?
There'll be a slight overhang.
Okay, well, that's, how big an overhang?
Okay. I'd say about two inches of the elevation.
But I want to make sure we're giving you the variance you need. I'm not trying to be difficult, but I don't want to say not extending any further than the existing building if you're in fact extending further than the existing building.
Yeah, I don't think the drawings call it out exclusively.
Yeah.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm asking these nice questions.
Yeah.
The, and how the, on the, well, I'll call the municipal parking lot side of the building, there are currently two downspouts that point towards the municipal parking lot. What are you doing with stormwater runoff from the?
We were going to continue the existing stormwater runoff. We'll have a gutter, and those downspouts would still be there.
Okay, and what exists at the rear of the building going to the neighboring property?
There actually is a downspout at the rear, and it goes into a gravel area at the back of the building.
The, and I guess, did you look at designs that would have conformed to the height requirement?
The architect did look at that. He felt from the aesthetic point of view that he wanted to give a pitch roof with some substantial, you know, he could have very easily lowered it, but it just wouldn't give the aesthetic appeal that he wanted to have. Okay, from that standpoint, and we were trying to do two things, do something that works and something that also looks pleasing to the area. Okay, made it very possible to lower that pitch down, but he thought it was so minor in nature that it shouldn't be a problem getting it improved, is what he said. He would prefer that aesthetic value of the pitch roof that he chose.
Okay, and just so I'm understanding, the height is just to that one point of the peak?
Just the point of the peak, and that's because he keeps the pitch the same from the right side of the building, you know, the roof slope is the same on the right side as it is at the left side. That's why it's just that it's a little higher at the peak there.
So, are you adding an addition? You're not adding an addition?
No, we're not adding anything, we're just adding roofing. It'll all be truss construction, so there's no room for, you know, any storage or anything up there.
Okay, so we're looking at either the front or rear elevation where the level portion of the roof extends across. Do you know what height that is?
What height, the existing wall?
No, the new roof?
The new roof. Or the height of the, that should be under the requirement, supposed to be 24 feet.
That's what I'm trying to establish, as to whether, you know, it is just that little triangle that's over or whether that whole flat section because?
Yeah, that's supposed to meet the requirement, yes.
Because I think we're in a condition because there would be no reason for that not to be?
Not to, not to meet it, yes, yeah.
Okay, other questions from members of the board? Are there any members of the audience who have any questions, testimony, statements, comments?
Would you raise your right hand if you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address.
John Reynolds, Architect, 189 Highland Avenue, Montclair. I'm here representing the Historic Preservation Commission. This applicant came before our commission at our last meeting, and in general, we would support the approval of this, but would ask that the board put a condition that they come back to us with a presentation of final finishes. Because I think the finishes have changed even from what's being shown here. I think you're shing, it's going, shingle roof or metal roof?
We're going to go with shingles.
Yeah, shingle, they're showing a metal roof here. So, you know, we would ask that they come back.
Okay, and do you have any objection to doing that?
No, we don't have, we agreed to shingles.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the audience with questions, testimony, anything you want to say about the application? Okay, anything further you wish to say before we discuss and vote on the application? Start with Mr. Simon.
I'm in favor of the application. It seems reasonable to protect the damage from the current, current flat roof. I'm in favor.
Mr. McCullough?
I'm also in favor of what's being proposed. I'm a little perplexed, frankly, with the recommendation from the Historical Commission because I'm not so sure that the pitch is sufficient, that, that it warrants. They're looking at the materials, per se. I'm not sure of the visibility of this, but from an aesthetic point of view, but otherwise, I'm supportive.
Mr. Allen?
I'm in favor of it with the, I think there's one condition.
There'll be a second, but yes. Okay, Mr. Caulfield?
I'm in favor. I know of the woes of a flat roof and the leakage, so I'm in favor.
Ms. Harris?
I'm in favor.
Okay, I'm also in favor, I think this will make this building look a lot more attractive than it does, and, I mean, the one place you see it from is when you're driving east through the municipal parking lot. It's right there in front of you, and I think this will improve it. I was somewhat concerned in terms of the height, in terms of the property, but now that I understand it is just that one point of, on the roof, I think, I think, I'm going to give you a little bit of flexibility, just because things happen in design, but that the roof extend no closer, no more than six inches closer to the rear property line than the existing rear wall of the building, so there's a little flexibility there, that the only, that the, I don't know how to call it, the flat, the level peak of the roof not exceed the 24-foot height requirement. It is only that one small triangular area that is allowed to exceed the height requirement, and that you meet the condition of the Historic Preservation Commission to go back and discuss materials with them. Okay, any further discussion? Someone want to make a motion?
To approve the conditions set by the chair.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
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 I must recuse myself?
These are yours.
The next matter coming before the board is Application 263533 and 37 Orange Road, HP 37 Orange Road, Montclair LLC. It's a request for an interpretation of the Gateway Phase 1 Redevelopment Plan. Mr. Harrison is going to recuse himself. Of the remaining members, we need to elect a temporary chairman. Now, the statute provides that the chairman and the vice chairman, when we do designate them, be regular members of the board. I believe Mr. Caulfield, Ms. Harris, and Mr. Simon are all alternates of the board. So the remaining three gentlemen.
I'm nominating Mr. McCullough.
So there's a motion to nominate Mr. McCullough as temporary chairman. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. McCullough, I'll help you out, okay? Counselor, you want to give us your appearance?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Thomas Troutner. I'm an attorney from the law firm of Kieza Shahanian on Gianna Tumasi, here on behalf of the applicant, HP 37 Orange Road, Montclair LLC. As indicated, this is an application for an interpretation of the Montclair Center Gateway Phase 1 Redevelopment Plan inasmuch as the property at issue is located at 37 Orange Road, Block 14, over lots 19 and 20. As set forth in the application, and I have no witnesses tonight, in terms of interpretation, I would merely, if the board will indulge me, just go over a little bit of what's been set forth in the letter submission to the board.
And just let me stop you, Mr. Troutner, for one second. The board should be in possession of a July 11 correspondence which summarizes the applicant's position. Just want to make sure everybody's seen that. Okay. Okay. Mr. Troutner, you can proceed.
Certainly. So, so again, this request for an interpretation, this really arises out of a currently pending application before the Montclair Planning Board. Pursuant to that application, my client is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval from the Planning Board to construct a mixed-use building. It's 46 dwelling units on three floors above one floor retail, along with a publicly accessible plaza along Orange Road, and some of that documentation of the Planning Board was submitted along with this application, really for informational purposes. At the time of the Planning Board's March 11 hearing, where we appeared, an issue was raised by one of the Planning Board members regarding what was characterized as a typographical error or mistake to what is currently stated in the redevelopment plan. And that alleged typo concerned some recollections, and I'm characterizing what was said, but by certain members of the Planning Board, that they hadn't intended to suggest to the Township Council when the Township Council was adopting an ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan, and it was sent to the Planning Board for review. The Planning Board, when it, when it reviewed the ordinance that was under consideration by the Council, that they hadn't intended to suggest to the Township Council that the redevelopment plan permit mixed-use buildings with commercial components to exceed a density of 18 units per acre. So based on that typographical error that was asserted, or at least in part, it was alleged that the plan might be interpreted to impose a density limitation on the project of 18 units per acre, which the project would exceed, and because of that, the Planning Board couldn't then hear the project because the Planning Board doesn't have the jurisdiction pursuant to the redevelopment plan or under the MOUL to grant a density variance, and the redevelopment plan doesn't allow the application to come to the zoning board. So the applicant submits that the, I mean, based on that, I'm sorry, the Planning Board attorney decided that, based on the allegations of the typo, that the language of the plan, in, at least in his opinion, was potentially ambiguous, and an interpretation would be the province of the zoning board of adjustment, so that's really why we're here. The applicant submits that, and as set forth in our letter, that a plain reading of the applicable provisions of the plan provide that the aforementioned density limitation, the 18 units per acre, applies only and exclusively to multifamily buildings with no commercial component. We have a commercial component. So thus, we would argue that that density limitation doesn't apply to a mixed-use project, wouldn't apply to our project. By way of some relevant background facts, and just understand, the redevelopment plan prior to November 2017 never contained any limitation as to density per acre for any property in the redevelopment plan, whether it was a multifamily property with no commercial component or a property like ours, a mixed-use property that has residential and commercial components. On January 9, 2018, the Township Council adopted Ordinance 01746, which amended the redevelopment plan, and one of the things that it did, and it was at the issue, is Section 4173 of that ordinance and of the redevelopment plan was amended to provide density and setback limitations for multifamily residential buildings, again, with no commercial component. And those limitations, again, it's a maximum density of 18 units per acre, and there was a side yard, required setback of 20 feet, and a minimum rear yard setback of 25 feet. Also set forth in that same ordinance, however, at Section 4162, is that mixed-use buildings with both residential, commercial components have a zero-foot back, a zero-foot setback. And it's also recognized in that ordinance, and has always been recognized by the plan, that retail and personal service establishments or commercial are permitted uses on the first story of properties on Orange Road, which is what's at issue here. So that ordinance is adopted by the Township Council. It does impose a density limitation on multifamily buildings with no commercial component, and subsequent to it being adopted, then in August of 2018, the applicant filed its site plan application, which we argue is consistent with what it said, we have a mixed-use building with a commercial component. Subsequent to our filing of that application, this issue was raised to the Township Council. I don't know exactly how it came to the Township Council, but on September 25 of 2018, the Township Council had on its agenda to consider the possible introduction of an ordinance that would have amended the redevelopment plan to change the language of the redevelopment plan, to say that the density limitation of 18 units per acre would apply to all multifamily residential buildings with or without a commercial component. And that particular agenda and the ordinance that was contemplated is at Exhibit R of our May 23, 2019 submission. It's the very large document that's with the, with the board's package. So the Township Council, notwithstanding having considered in some form the possible introduction of that ordinance to fix this alleged typo or to change the redevelopment plan, they ultimately withdrew the amendment, they didn't put the amendment through, they never introduced the ordinance. So then, subsequent to that, October 16, 2018, our site plan application for this project was deemed complete before the Planning Board, and on November 29, we appeared in front of the Historic Preservation Commission. We got some favorable reviews regarding the architecture, and then subsequent to that time, we responded to comment letters from the Planning Board professionals, and then when we arrived on March 11, the site plan application that had been, at that point, scheduled for hearing, it had been delayed because of a lengthy Planning Board hearing involving the Lackawanna Plaza project, we were then advised again to seek an interpretation from, from this board regarding the language of the, of the plan. In terms of, in terms of what I would advise as, as the relevant law, and certainly the board's attorney can instruct on this, like other zoning ordinances, redevelopment plans must be given reasonable construction, and the legislative intent is to be determined from the language used, and the board's decision in this matter should be guided by the plain language of what the redevelopment plan says. And in this regard, there's an appellate division decision that speaks to this, and it talks about when it comes to interpreting ordinances, this is the appellate division talking, "We will not depart from the plain meaning of language, which is free of ambiguity, for an ordinance must be construed according to the ordinary meaning of its words and phrases, and these are to be taken in the ordinary or popular sense unless it plainly appears they're used in a different sense." So at the risk of being slightly argumentative, notwithstanding the apparent frustration by possibly some of the Planning Board members that the Township Council didn't enact zoning through the redevelopment plan on the subject property precisely how some of those individual Planning Board members might have done, Section 4173 of the redevelopment plan, which provides for the setbacks and density limitations for multifamily buildings with no commercial components, does not apply to mixed-use buildings with a commercial component. And again, 4173, which imposes And again, 4173, which imposes setbacks for multifamily buildings without a commercial component, is, as written, consistent with section 4162, which provides zero setbacks for mixed-use buildings with commercial components. It's consistent as written. Any allegation of a typo gives way, again, to the fact that, and it's undermined by the fact, that the Township Council was made aware of this potential issue, had the opportunity to correct it, and didn't correct it. And I would argue, because when they read it, the ordinance makes sense. It's consistent with what I just talked about in terms of the internal setbacks, and it's also consistent with the township's master plan goal of encouraging mixed-use projects in the commercial corridor, particularly the area of this redevelopment, this redevelopment area and where the redevelopment plan is located. So, looking at all this, again, what I would argue is a common sense, plain reading of these sections makes it clear that the plan is written, is adopted by the Township Council, is consistent with a master plan goal, and all this is highlighted in our May 23, 2019 letter. And for that reason, we're respectfully requesting that this board, in interpreting the language of the plan at section 4173, interpret it as written, and that it does not impose a density limitation of 18 units per acre on mixed-use projects where there's both a residential and a commercial component.
So, let me try and say it a slightly different way so that we understand. There was a lot said there.
That's the planners here.
The application pending before the Planning Board is a mixed use. The ground floor is retail, the top three floors are residential, proposed. The Montclair Center Gateway Phase One Redevelopment Plan, in section 4 dot 1 dot 7 dot 3, under the title "Multifamily Residential Office and Mixed-Use Buildings on Orange Road", says the following. "The following requirements apply to new multifamily residential buildings with no commercial component." And then it lists the 18-unit density maximum. This project has a commercial component. The plain language in the redevelopment plan says it doesn't apply, okay? This issue, now, look, when redevelopment plans and ordinances are adopted, there can be mistakes made. Somebody could say, "That's not what we meant." A governing body says, "Now that we're looking at it, we meant to do something different." So, they always have the opportunity to amend the ordinance. This issue specifically came to them. If you look at Exhibit R in the submission, on the September, I think it's 25, 2018 council agenda, you'll see there's a reference to consider on first reading an amendment to the redevelopment plan ordinance. And if you look behind the agenda, you see the change would be to strike that sentence, the one that says, "The following requirements apply to new multifamily residential buildings with no commercial component." So if that was introduced and ultimately adopted, the 18-unit density would apply. But the council did not take any action on that ordinance. So the issue was brought to them some eight or nine months ago, and took no action. So, it seems to me, the clear language says, "The density requirement applies only to new multifamily residential buildings with no commercial component." This project has a commercial component. The plain reading of the redevelopment plan says it doesn't apply. I don't know where we go anywhere else with this.
But isn't it contradictory to just the heading of the section?
Well, I think, though, when you have an ordinance where there's captions, you know, where there's headings, and then you have specific standards, that's more specific language, I think the more specific language would control.
My question, in terms of what is the alleged typo, and what word are they saying?
That sentence, the allegation is that sentence doesn't belong in there.
Did the entire sentence?
Either the entire sentence should be removed, or the part that says "with no commercial component." And it may be that some Planning Board member said, "When we looked at this, we wanted that out," but it didn't come out, okay? And the ultimate decision in an ordinance relating to the redevelopment plan is by the Township Council.
We have the planner is here. Kichik might be able to answer. Is it a typo, or in that sense?
I think the best way, it is a typo. It was not intended to exclude mixed-use development from that density. I think what happened is, this ordinance went to various bodies and subcommittees, and was amended at various points along the way. And at the last, when it was amended at the last time, that sentence was not taken out to allow, it was amended to expand permitted uses to include commercial uses, and that sentence was not taken out, and it should have been.
And so, let's assume that that language stays in there. Are there bulk requirements that apply to mixed-use buildings with commercial components?
Well, the only, there's a maximum height of four stories that applies. But as was pointed out, there's no side yard setback requirements for mixed-use development?
No.
And that's, and again, at the risk of being argumentative, I know that's an opinion that the council didn't, that that sentence shouldn't have been there when the council voted on it, but reading the ordinance, if you read that sentence in that section that says, "Multifamily residential buildings with no commercial component now have these side yard setbacks, let's ignore the density for a moment." And then you look simultaneously at section 4.1.6.2, which talks about internal setbacks, the last bullet of that section says that the minimum building setback in adjacent side and rear yard lot lines of commercial and mixed-use buildings containing commercial and residential uses within the plan area is zero feet. So the point I'm making is if that sentence in 4173, "The following requirements apply to new multifamily residential buildings with no commercial component," or just the words "no commercial component" were to come out, now these two sections would actually conflict with one another. You'd have one section that says you have zero setback, if you have a commercial component, and you'd have another section that says you have 20 and 25-foot setbacks.
And just to point out to your question about the setbacks, there is a setback requirement in 4.1.6, a front yard setback of 15 feet.
That's, and that is correct, and our plan actually complies with that.
Yes, we did go back and forth about that. So there are setbacks that do apply for front yard, but nothing for the side yard.
So, we're looking at Exhibit A.
Exhibit A.
Okay. And the section that we started with that is in dispute is 4 dot 1 dot 7 dot 3. There's not, there's no page numbers.
Actually, it's page 19 on the right side of the page. In the middle, the blue box in the middle of the page.
There it is. Where I stuck my yellow sticker. So that's the primary section we're focused on. Then we just talked about two sections, 4 dot 1 dot 6 dot 2, which talks about the side yard setback requirement, and 4 dot 1 dot 6 dot 1, which talks about the front yard setback requirement. So, you know, I think the plain language is as such, I mean, the governing body was made aware of the issue, because they drafted an ordinance that would make the density applicable, they took no action on it, and that was eight, nine months ago.
But do we have any understanding as to why they took no action? Is it just a matter of interpretation?
Well, but I think what we don't know, I don't know.
I don't know.
We don't know. But it was specifically to address this point, because that's in that ordinance. If you look at Exhibit R, so, I mean, the way I look at it is, the plain language says it's not applicable. The issue was brought to the governing body's attention nine months ago, they took no action. I think you're left, the only choice you're left with is, what does the redevelopment plan say? And it says it's not applicable. That's what I think.
So, what's written is what is. Because nobody moved to amend.
The governing body could have, if they said, "Oh, my God, this is a mistake."
They would have agreed with the planning board.
And in fact, they did have an ordinance drafted for first reading back on September 25. It was not introduced.
Okay. So they tabled it or forgot about it.
We could refer it back to the council for their action.
No, I think you're here to interpret the ordinance now.
Okay. But I mean, I guess basically what I'm saying is, we would say that what's written is applicable.
That's correct.
And if a change was going to be made, it would have to go back.
If the redevelopment plan was going to be amended, they would, the governing body would have to do it by ordinance.
And then presented the amendment that they voted on. In other words, they haven't done anything.
Well, they, the issue, it's clear the issue came to their attention, because that ordinance back in September that was not introduced was drafted, taking that sentence out. But they elected not to take action on that.
Then what is written stands.
I think that's my opinion. Yeah, so let's just see if there's any member of the public that has any testimony or questions or statements they want to make. Would you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth in a matter pending before the board?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address, please.
William Scott, 23 Cedar Avenue. I'm also the co-chair of the Montclair Housing Commission, and also the chair of the Montclair NAACP Housing Committee. I did attend the Planning Board meeting when this redevelopment plan for this particular property was being reviewed. And my concern and my interest at the time was the density. And the density was stated at 18 units. I can't get into the setbacks on all the other requirements, but I was specifically concerned and interested about the density from the standpoint, if the density was going to increase in this property, on this property, from an affordable housing standpoint, we were going to seek the 20% set aside for the affordable housing. I was assured by the acting chairman at the Planning Board meeting, Mr. Broadhead, that the density was going to be at 18 units. So, and I'm not privy of all the different subcommittees that this application did go through, because, you know, from a Housing Commission standpoint, we're just not privy to those, all that, those different meetings. It may have gone to the Economic Redevelopment Committee, it may have gone to the Planning Board Subcommittee, but as far as these primary hearing on the redevelopment plan, I did attend that meeting, and as I mentioned, we were assured that the density would not be increased to 46 units. Now, I think this leads back to the point that this may have been a typo, how it got to the 46 units, whatever the case may be. And from a Housing Commission standpoint, we do follow all the redevelopment plans very, very closely. So, when this did come before the Planning Board for site plan review, that's what really piqued our interest, because the application was coming back with this 46-unit requirement. So, and of course, that's why we're here today. It went back and forth, it didn't get approved, it was a typo. But I guess my point is, I'm pretty assured that it was a typo. You know, how the Planning Board or how the council is going to address that, they may have to take it from a standpoint, it was a typo. If the applicant wants to pursue this and take advantage of a typo, well, that's obviously his option. But my understanding, and I did go back and review the Planning Board meeting initially, it was clearly stated that the density was going to be set at 18 units, and in the minutes it stated that as well. But, you know, I'm not privy to all the other meetings, but I was assured that this development was only going to be 18 units.
Mr. Scott, do you understand the ultimate determination as to what the permitted density would be is not the Planning Board's decision, but the decision of the Township Council?
Oh, absolutely. Especially when it comes to redevelopment plans. Okay, I understand that. And that's my point, why, from a Housing Commission standpoint, since we monitor redevelopment projects in affordable housing is something that we're obviously concerned about, anytime density goes up, we would look for a larger set aside. So, we absolutely had no understanding that there was going to be an issue with this application moving forward, but evidently, based on this typo, that was the case.
Any questions of Mr. Scott? Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this application? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Mr. Troutner, you have anything else to add before the board makes its decision?
I would just echo what Mr. Sullivan said in terms of response to Mr. Scott's statement. And then, the only other thing I would just point out is, you know, it's, again, I think it's supposition in terms of whether or not there was a typo on anybody's part, in terms of what was crafted ultimately, but ultimately, an ordinance was, came to the Township Council, Township Council considered it, they voted on it, they adopted it, and then they had a second opportunity or bite at the apple to change it if they wanted to, and they didn't.
Where is what?
It's the very last page.
Exhibit R.
If you look at Exhibit R, okay, you got, okay, so stay on Exhibit R. You'll see the first page of Exhibit R, stay with me.
It's the agenda.
Okay, it's the agenda of the council for September 25, 2018. On that agenda, and I'll find it, under New Business, which is on page 2 of 5, down at the bottom, it says, "Ordinance Amending Montclair Center Gateway Redevelopment Plan D Phase 1, Ordinance 0-18-043." All right, turn the page past the agenda, and now you'll see the ordinance that could have been introduced on that night, okay? Keep going, keep going.
It's the very last page. Keep going.
Right here, source here. All right, that ordinance is two pages. If you go to the second page.
Page 1, amended the following.
Okay, go to page 2. That ordinance crosses off that sentence in 4 dot 1 dot 7 dot 3. So, if this were introduced and adopted, the density would apply to a new building with a commercial component. But they elected not to introduce this.
And you know that because?
They just didn't do it. They just didn't introduce it. It was on the agenda, the ordinance was in front of them, they chose not to introduce it.
Because if they did, it would be in.
Yeah, we can.
There would have been a second reading.
There would have been a public hearing, a second reading.
There would have been notice.
And I can offer, it's supposition, admittedly, but I could offer the supposition that this is a, this is a small property, I think it's .62 acres. It's located next to an eight-story hotel, a six-story parking garage with six-story buildings behind it, the, under the auspices of the redevelopment plan, which generally encourage mixed-use development, and specifically when it talks about this area and this property in the master plan, it talks about encouraging retail on ground floor with residential uses above it. It's not surprising that the council may have been attracted to the idea that you could have more density if you were doing that type of mixed-use project encouraged in this redevelopment area, and that that type of development in between an eight-story hotel and a six-story parking garage with six-story buildings behind it makes sense, as opposed to, and not prohibiting somebody from coming in and just doing a multifamily project, but again, encouraging a mixed-use project to fit in that block and that redevelopment plan. That's again, supposition. I think the baseline point is exactly as Mr. Sullivan talked about it, it's what it says, and it's what it says, and it's what it says, it's the plain meaning.
So the issue before you is, does the density limitation of 18 residential units per acre apply? We went through, section 4 dot 1 dot 7 dot 3 says, "The 18 dwelling units per acre applies to new multifamily residential buildings with no commercial component." This has a commercial component. So the plain reading of what's in the redevelopment plan is that that density requirement does not apply. So the issue, someone needs to make a motion that either the 18-unit residential dwelling maximum does or does not apply.
The 18-unit, can you say that again?
The issue is whether or not the density limitation of 18 residential units per acre applies to this property.
Can I try that we make the motion that the plain language currently in use applies, therefore, with therefore, with a building being built with a commercial component, the 18-unit density does not apply?
And that's in the form of a motion?
That's in the form, if that's.
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense. I mean, that's, I understand what your motion is. Is there a second to that motion?
I have a question. I have a question. Why can't we just say the plain language applies?
I think that's what Mr.
That's what I was saying.
Put a lot of other things in there.
Well, I.
Want to be clear.
So, Mr. Church, as I understand your motion, your motion is that the density limitation, that under the plain language of the redevelopment plan in section 4.1.7.3, the density limitation of 18 residential units per acre would not apply because there was a commercial component in this.
Exactly.
Okay, that's the motion. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll say it.
Do you want to get a roll call?
Okay. Give me a moment.
Michael, what does this go from here?
Goes back to the Planning Board.
Yeah. You're.
If the motion passes.
And then it goes, does it go to the council at all?
Well, the council always is free to amend the redevelopment plan by ordinance.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Caulfield?
Yes.
And Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, everyone.
Have we finished? Is there a motion to?
No, we have to pay the bill?
No, that's the Planning Board. That's not the zoning board.
The zoning board doesn't pay the bills, unfortunately.
Resting to your.
Is there a motion to?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
Is this yours or mine?